I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic which stands on the nation of Canada, in indivisal, with liberty and justice for all. I open the meeting at this time for comments from the public. There being no comments from the public at this time, I close the session. We'll open it again at the end of the meeting, minutes of the previous meeting.
Will that the minutes be accepted and presented?
I'll second it.
Got a motion made and seconded, any discussion? There being no discussion, all those in favor vote by usual sign of aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carried. You all have a copy of the bills, is there any questions? Our standard, is there any additions? No?
Make a motion to accept the bills as written. I'll second it.
Motion made and seconded, any discussion? There being no discussion, all those in favor vote by usual sign of aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carried. Correspondents?
First piece of correspondence we have is from the New York State Police. James McMahon, Superintendent, it's addressed to Chief Robert Craig. I'd like to express my sincere appreciation for your continued support for the Buckle Up New York campaign. As you likely know, seatbelts were raised again to a record high following the last enforcement wave conducted September 8th of 1720. Surveys conducted after the enforcement effort indicated that, on average, eighty-six percent of motorists were wearing seatbelts compared with eighty-two percent before the effort. The dedication of patrol officers, deputies, and troopers across the state continues to drive safety to new levels. Each and every one of them should be proud of their accomplishment. The final Buckle Up New York enforcement will occur simultaneous with the national ABC mobilization and coincide with the start of a traditional holiday season. The holiday season is such a special time of the year, and we can make a difference in ensuring safety and thereby making those holidays happy. Your cooperation throughout this campaign has been tremendous, and I look forward to your continued support in this life-saving effort.
Always nice to receive the nice comments.
The second piece of correspondence is from Thomas LeBombarde, P.E., addressed to Mayor. It requests for water and/or sewer service at Tschwinye Road. It's referenced September 22nd letter. Since September 22nd, we requested consideration of the village to allow extension of the water service from the terminal point on Route 9B to provide water for the proposed subdivision. Subsequently, we performed soil tests on the proposed subdivision and found that existing soils are inadequate for the installation of individual sewer treatment and disposal system. An insufficient depth of soil exists over the confining clay layer to allow adequate separation for treatment of sewage waste. It is safe to assume that the same condition exists for neighboring properties. As ten state standards require a ten-foot separation between water and sewer, extension of both services within the existing right-of-way is not feasible. Additionally, the water line already extends approximately three hundred feet beyond sewer line, making extension of just the sewer line and providing the subdivision with individual wells equally problematic. As soils in the vicinity of the proposed project site are problematic, only a matter of time before neighboring ISTs begin to fail, if they haven't already. Replacement systems for existing homes will be very expensive for these residents, potentially increasing the demand for water for village sewer service. Based on the above factors, on behalf of Jerry Menard, the developer, we respectfully request that the village consider budgeting the cost of extension of the sewer line and the water line from the existing terminal points to the intersection of Route 9B and Tschwinye Road. As a governmental agency, you have more options for obtaining easements than the developer. I won't read the rest of it because just I've read the most important part of this letter.
I believe we have a meeting set up for Thursday.
Yes, we do.
With the engineer and the Water Service Committee, or Sewer Committee, so make a report back at the next meeting.
The next letter is from our village attorney. It's addressed to myself, it's regarding subdivision and planning board issue. Said we have discussed the recent increase in development and subdivision activity in the village and the fact that said activity is only reviewed by the village code enforcement officer and the village board. It may be appropriate that the village board consider the establishment of a village planning board so that a separate entity could review and approve subdivision activities in the village. Said this is only being sent as a suggestion for the board's consideration.
I believe that this item also came up in one of our city meetings.
It did.
Very rough with our consultant, and I believe in the future we're going to have to set up a planning board. I think it only makes sense because it's obvious that the development is going to be south or west of here, it's not going to be in the northern complex. So it's, and I think it's something the board should maybe consider, maybe next year, two thousand along, to take a look at this. At this time, I don't think it's got a certain purpose right at this immediate block in the future.
Okay, the next letter is also from our village attorney, Thomas Renee. It's regarding the cable-to-v franchise agreement. Time Warner Cable has indicated to me that they would be willing to retain the language in our franchise agreement in which a security bond would be posted in exchange for our withdrawing our demand to retain the arbitration language in said agreement. In addition, please note that I believe we still need to discuss the terms of the pole underground usage agreement so that same can be finalized simultaneously with the franchise agreement. There also is some, another page attached to this, which I won't read, but I think you've all had a chance to read, Mr. Steve Myron's comments about the cooperation that he receives from the village.
Did everyone have a chance to read those comments? Guess he wasn't very kind to us, was he? Well, so be it. Oh yeah, Bobby is working with our electrical engineer on other franchises that have underground equipment and see, you know, how we can, where we can go with this. Because we really need some guidelines, I don't think any of us on the board have any expertise on this. It's easy, well, count poles, but on the top of feet, footage of pipe is different. I know you have talked to Kurt about it.
You gotta remember when we're dealing with this, George, he had given some numbers to our lawyer.
Oh, he has?
Yes, I have. He asked me to go out and figure out exactly what the cost is, but when you got about three hundred fifty thousand dollars in the ground, you're not getting nothing for it. They have done absolutely nothing for us, they have done no digging, they have not put any labor in putting the pipe in the ground, they don't even buy the pipe, it's all our pipe. So you have to get something that is interesting.
And I totally agree with you. Well, we need to come up with a number that we can use, you know, like so much a foot or so much a yard or so much a mile or whatever.
Our lawyer said so much a month and over a ten-year period to pay it back, is what he's looking at when I talk to Tom.
Just a flat rate or whatever it costs?
Exactly, I mean, we got the money in.
Just the village as a whole, don't worry about the footage or whatever, just basically rent.
Just take as a whole what we put in, their cost of shares, spread it out over ten years and that'll be the payment for you.
And then they went on the pipe afterwards?
No.
No.
No, that would be just a rent. That would be a lease or whatever.
Just rent, actually, if you want to get rid of the money. Because they asked for all the space that's in there.
Yeah, I know, I know they did.
I mean, you know, there's an extra fifty thousand dollars in pipe just for the emburages going on Pratt Street.
How much in the village is done for the cable? I mean, is there like two quarters of the village underground?
Well, all the south, all the south end, okay? And anything we do now is we're putting around the cable, something.
We don't have that many, that many streets on poles anymore.
Part of you. You know, Maple Street, you know, Chaplain, Pratt Street, Montgomery.
State.
State, all your side streets.
It's mostly in this end, isn't it?
There's still a lot, you know, they're going to incur another half a million dollars in underground piping here because they're done.
If they keep going the way they're going, look, they're going, I can't understand why they need three, three-inch conduits.
They, they asked for them.
I know they asked for them and we gave them to them.
Okay, they gotta pay for them, George.
And I understand that, Bob, but I just, you know.
Now, if they ask crews in here to come in and work and supply their own pipe like Champlain does, that's a different story, but they're not doing nothing. They only raise a finger, you know that.
We also have, we also have to look at future, future projects also. I mean, if we lock into a certain, certain price for the next ten years, and then in the next ten years, we have to earn another half a million dollar worth of debt.
Exactly, well, then, the numbers that I gave them are for the projects that we've done so far.
Right.
Okay? Anything after next year that we pipe again, that was going to be another infliction on numberless.
I think by the, I'm trying to pick a date here that we can, Tom, Tom Renee's got the amount of pipe costs that we've transferred, now we need to come up with a rate.
Yep, well, he was, he was going to look into that too, you know, how can we retrieve our money back in a timeframe?
Okay.
And he agreed on what I said, okay? We install it, they're using it, somebody's got to pay for it.
I hope so.
You know.
It shouldn't be a cost that the village has to pay.
Exactly.
I think the rental agreement will be totally separate.
Contract.
Agreement, but the franchise agreement, we need to discuss the wording in there to see if the village is in agreement to drop our demand for a franchise, for the, in the franchise agreement in which they will give a security bond if we will withdraw our demand to retain the arbitration language. That's the first thing we needed to answer.
The cable company is very adamant that they do not want to go to arbitration on any issue.
Right.
And Tom feels that we should have that in there to protect the village.
We're over a barrel if we don't.
Right.
Because then it's just, it'll be a court case.
It's our, it's our franchise area, George. This is our franchise area.
I understand.
And we should control it. And when we start losing that, we're going to start losing our electric, you know that. Then we're going to be a big time trouble.
But you don't bend them, we want hope.
That, that was in, that was in the original contract with no channels, and it wasn't a problem, but there seems to be a problem with Time Warner.
And I can't see where the security bond is a problem because that's twenty-five thousand dollar bond, so that's very, very difficult.
See, the thing I had a heartburn with them was when we started this underground project, they did a lot of direct burial of cable. And now if you have a problem at your home, you know, here's a better cable, it's buried underneath your lawn, you have a problem, then they come in, they pull the cable up, install a new one, they got your lawn all tore up again. And that's why we decided to go to pipe all the way. That way there, if there's something wrong, they pull the cable out, pull a new one in, the same pipe. I just don't like that, I don't think it's fair to the residents that they have to go through this. That's why you can't. And there are plenty of places in the village of where they have put direct burial, which of course, we have no control, we had no control over that. At the beginning, until we started to sort of put our foot down and then we, I think in our, in our electrical code or whatever it is, our code, we have put, that everything, every new project will now be through underground conduit.
I think we need to advise Tom that we won't bend on either, any of these, either, either issues with the cable company. If they want to sign a contract, then they'll go by, they'll go by our agreement.
We have taken a lot of things out of that contract.
Yes, we have.
Mr. Isabella from PSC said he thinks the village has given everything, gotten very little.
Yeah, we got enough, we've got enough.
So is that just?
We'll let that in the motion.
I'll make the motion.
I have a motion.
I'll second it.
Any discussion? Motion made and seconded. There being no discussion, all those in favor vote by usual sign of aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carried.
Okay, next piece of correspondence is from Jim Gonyo, Director of Road Property, Tax Service for the Clinton County Government. This is regarding persons with disability and limited income. The exemption has been amended to increase the maximum income ceiling for the basic exemption from nineteen thousand five to twenty thousand five. This also results in an increase in the sliding scale portion of the exemption allowing a disability to the minimum, five percent exemption to persons with incomes between twenty-eight and twenty-eight-nine. This legislation applies to assessment rules based on a taxable status date occurring on or after June 1, 2001. Now, if you wish to amend what we do now, you have to do it local law. We normally give home side, we normally give maximum. So you need a motion to proceed with local law? Correct. So move.
Second.
Got a motion made and seconded, any discussion?
So I'll ask the attorney to drop that local law.
Should we do the same with the senior citizen?
Yes.
Want to do them both same time?
Same amendment?
Want to do them both same time, yes?
Sure.
Do I amend your motion for the senior citizen?
Okay.
Same letter, only it says senior citizen.
Well, I was going to, I was going to let Dale make the motion on that, but I'm going to second it. But if you want an amended motion, I'm, I'm good with that. The thing I think is most important, you have the public understand that this applies to assessment rules based on the taxable status occurring on or after June 1, 2001. So even though we pass it now, it doesn't apply until 2001, okay?
I have an amended motion, any discussion? And seconded. There being no discussion, all those in favor vote by usual sign of aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carried.
And that's all correspondence.
Report of Mayor trustees. Oh, we have a resolution. Legal notice. Notice hereby given to the Board of Trustees of the Village of Rossus Point, Platte County, New York, on the sixth November 2000, passed a resolution designed, designating the office to be voted on the next village election. A copy of the completed resolution is follows. The next term election for officers shall be held on March 20th, 2001, and whereas Board of Trustees have adopted a resolution designating the offices to be filled in such election in terms. Now, therefore being resolved, the Board of Trustees of the Village of Rossus Point designate the following offices and are vacant at the end of the current official year and to be filled at the village election to be held on March 21st, 2000. Oh, wait, there's two different dates. You got two different dates?
Well, we'll have a legal date. Do you have?
I got it down. I think I got March.
I got March 2001. March 20th.
Motion. Village elections to be held on March 20th, 2000. Trustee, two years.
Two thousand more than two thousand.
Two thousand.
Yeah, it says two thousand. Bad days is hard for her. Thank you. Trustee, two years. Trustee, two years, trustee, one year, village justice, village justice, four years. Be a further result that the village clerk is hereby directed to publish the resolution in full in the Blasberg Press Republican.
You say two years, you have two rooms coming up.
Yes, that's what I said. Trustee, two years, trustee, two years, trustee, one year.
Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't hear, I'm sorry, excuse me.
This resolution shall take effect immediately following the question that a foregone building put to Roca Vault in the result is follows. Trustee Moore.
Aye.
Trustee Dubra.
Aye.
Trustee Menard.
Aye.
Trustee Huckrow.
Aye.
And the mayor votes aye. There will be a special meeting of the Board of Trustees of the Village of Rossus Point November 14th, 2000, at 6:00 PM, upstairs in the meeting room of the Village Office Complex, 139 Lake Street. And that is discussed with Mr. Larson, the municipal officer, consultant on city. Are we considering moving that, Beth, not this time?
Yes, but we will have to change the date on Tuesday because we won't be able to have it Tuesday because this court here is Tuesday.
Have you checked with Mr. Larson?
Do you want to change, do you want to change it for the next week?
We can't do that.
No, but we can change it after that.
Yeah, no, that, that won't be a problem, okay? Uh, next thing on my agenda, it was that Public Works Superintendent Bob Park and Chief Water Plant Operator Gary Malinski and myself attended the Conference of Mayors in Alexander Bay on the 8th of October, and we received our, an award, the 2000 Pride in Public Works Award presented to the Village of Rossus Point. This is the plaque that we were presented. We were one of three communities in the whole state of New York to get this award. I thought it was, I think it was very nice for the village and for the project on zebra mussels, so a lot of people that were involved in it, our village engineer Doug Ferris, and of course Gary and Bob. It was a very nice dinner, I think we had nice time. There is press releases that have been issued, with pictures no less. Again, thank you to the Conference of Mayors and thank you Village of Rossus Point. I request an executive session to discuss accounting personnel.
Second.
A motion made and seconded, Roca Vault, trustee Moore.
Aye.
Trustee Dubra.
Aye.
Trustee Menard.
Aye.
Trustee Huckrow. And mayor votes aye. And with that, I would like to, one other item, I would like to thank people that run the duty-free shop down here for their quick response and taking care of the building that the young lady drove through. The building is completely gone, the property is completely cleaned up, and they did it on their own, so it's nice to see people do have some pride. And I'd like to thank them for it. Uh, trustee Moore.
Yeah, I have the Public Works, Bob Park. Working on the line crew and underground electric project. Bob Sterling is preparing sidewalks on Lake Street. Electric Department continuing to solve an underground electric project, this name prepares to the system and repairs the streetlights. Central Garage working on the equipment and regularity. Now, I'd like to ask the, Joe Dogg, to give me a report on the library of the steps where they were turning off.
Okay, well, we've begun work on the library steps. We removed the rejected concrete and new concrete is in and we're about fifty percent complete.
So when is it to be completed?
This project, we should have all the concrete in by next week, and the nosing tread is on order and that should be here before the end of the year, and we'll be attaching that to the stairs.
So in the meantime, you can't be using the steps up there?
Correct.
Because I've been getting calls and one thing and another, I'm just wondering, okay. Thank you, sir. And that's all I have.
Thank you, trustee Moore, trustee Dubra.
We're discussing executive session, we can discuss the lighting personnel.
Second. Roca Vault, motion made and seconded, trustee Moore.
Aye.
Trustee Dubra.
Aye.
Trustee Menard.
Aye.
Trustee Huckrow.
Aye.
Mayor votes aye.
I have the monthly water plant report, it's quite lengthy. The highlight, as I see it, is that Dave Supremo has completed his course of study and will soon be taking his exam to become a licensed operator. That would be of great assistance to the village as well as to the employee himself. We are looking forward to the Clinton County Department of Health annual inspection on November 9th, and I'm sure following the inspection that we just had, they will find things in pretty much shape. I have no further comments on that unless somebody else has a question. Next item on my report is the update from the Ferris on the underground water project.
With the water plant projects, since the last time we met, we completed a video using the village's video camera. We were able to go out on the march from Dean's Arena and video the intake line for about approximately two hundred feet. And we were also able to video the intake line from the intake vault out to two hundred feet. So if any of you would like to see that video to see what the inside of our pipe looks like, I'd encourage you to see it, you got a fine piece of equipment there. And people from the village who've worked with us on that were very instrumental in having a smooth project. We also reinstalled the intake screens, the DPW highway, people cleaned up the screens, removed all the zebra mussels. We counted samples from the mussels and we had between twenty to seventy thousand mussels per square meter on the screens, so we did have an explosion out there. And we've got clean screens back on the intake line now, so it should be set for winter. On the water storage tank, we did receive the appraisal from Board of Appraisal Service, the industrial appraiser who was hired by us last time or two meetings ago, and I'll give this to the builder ministry here for the appraisal. It shows that the industrial property is worth approximately twenty-five thousand dollars per acre. And you found on your table tonight, a simple summary I put together, showing three sites that we've been looking at for the new water storage tank locations. They're summarized there, A, B, and C. And I've also gone through and prepared a table that shows roughly what the incremental capital cost will be for each of the three sites, and also what the possible annual expense might be for the three sites. What's important to note is that the site A, which has been our favorite, is the one on Academy Street. We've got the approvals from the county planning board and from the town of Champlain to go ahead and construct the tank there. However, as is shown in the table, that property, since it's in the town of Champlain, is taxable. And so either we become a city and we annex the property into the city, or we submit writing a request to the town to be exempt of taxes. By using the present tax rate and assuming we'll have a construction cost value of approximately two million dollars for the new water storage tank, that would be an annual tax bill of about fifty thousand dollars per year for the water storage tank. Looking at the second site, that would be acquiring property on Chapman Street, part of the Hillsbury property. There would be a cost to acquire the property, depending on how many acres we want, it would be roughly forty-two, one-hundred thousand dollars in market value to purchase that property. There would be some environmental costs associated with that site. The site has been given a quote-unquote "clean bill of health" by the D E C, however, I can assure you, when we start excavating for foundations, if we find anything, it'll be our cost to clean it up. It wouldn't be prohibitive, but it will be an additional cost. And I show that, that's a twenty thousand dollars. By going to the Chapman Street location, we will have additional piping costs, we will need to cross the railroad underground twice, that's a lot more costs. And thereafter, we will have to pay the railroad approximately five hundred dollars per year, an annual fee, since we're going through their right-of-way. So initially, using the Chapman Street site is going to cost an additional quarter million dollars or so for this project. or so for this project. However, the long-term cost versus $50,000 a year will be $500 a year. One other negative for that location is that the railroad company has control of our pipelines. The railroad company should decide that for whatever reason they want us to move our lines, it's their right-of-way, they have control of it. The odds are that won't happen, but it has to be noted. And then I put down Site C, Chief Water Plant Operator Gary Malinsky and myself were talking. Site C was something we had looked at in the original study. It's on Clinton Street, it's a Bissin, former Bissin Trailer Park. We are already acquiring a portion of that land for the substation expansion. So one of the issues is there may not be enough room left on that site for a new water storage tank. And also that storage tank would be situated between residential area and substation, and so it might be kind of tight. So those are the three locations we're looking at. These figures are preliminary, but they are definitely accurate enough for decision-making. And now we're turning it over to the village board to make a decision which location so that we can complete engineering and bid for string construction.
When are you looking on a decision for that?
I would like one as soon as possible. I wasn't expecting one tonight. But I would hope that by the next meeting, we could make a decision.
Can we go to the town? I guess what's the process of going to the town and asking for an exemption on that water tank problem?
Yeah, we could send them a letter and see if we can get that exemption, if they gave it to us now, even though we haven't built it yet, we can approach them. I can do that.
Thank you, Trustee Duprah. Trustee Menard.
My first item is continuity, continuation of the energy efficiency program. I believe everybody received a copy of the letter from PLM. I believe we're going to continue this, well, to get this program, we'd like to continue this at this time. Been in it for the last several years. It seemed to have helped us.
I would make a motion.
I'd like to make a motion that we continue with the energy efficiency program through the PLM.
I got a motion made and seconded, any discussion? The reason why we, I think we need to continue this is that I can see it coming, I think Bob and I both have attended enough meetings to see it coming, that there are going to be demands in the next few years on energy efficiency, and this is one way of doing it. Program has worked very well for us here. And I think it's, I think it's a great idea. Whoever thought of it was, it was a great idea and it's worked out well. That's my only comments. Any other comments? All those in favor of the motion, vote by use of sign of aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carried.
My second item is the MUA, New York Power Authority IED allocations. Do you guys hold more silence, Bob?
Well, what that is, is they want us to take, instead of buying our, say, a new industry comes through the door, and we get a megawatt power from the hydropower, half a megawatt Fitzpatrick power. Rather than buy the Fitzpatrick power, they want us to buy theirs, which is cheaper. You know, of course, you're going to go to the cheaper one. We already committed ourselves to the New York Municipal Power Agency. No sense. And in that same frame, as with that IDA deal, right now, we acquire 930 KW of incremental Fitzpatrick's power from the power authority, which we're paying $11.88 a KW. I'd like to convert that 930 KW and buy it from the New York Municipal Power Agency, and that would only cost us $744 a KW. I need your permission to move from there and do the paperwork.
Bob, look at this.
I got it, Al, Kurt. On the ID power, that's the way to go.
We don't have, we don't have any contract with the?
We do, but we can get out of it right now. That's what this is all about. What happens is if you lose a megawatt of hydro, say your air is backed off, that half a megawatt, you're going to pay for that till the day you die. If you, if you go to the New York Municipal Power Agency, as soon as you lose, they take it right, they drop you right out of it, so you don't have to pay for it. That, that's the bad feature about buying the power. I think it's just a wise move to move off from it. We're paid, we're paid to move into the power agency, there's no sense using, nothing but hydro from New York Power.
Yeah, definitely, it's going to be cheaper.
It's going to be cheaper.
I make a motion that we, that we continue.
All seconds. I have a motion made and seconded, any discussion?
I guess all we have to do is sign this letter and return it. Is that basically what's necessary?
Yeah. Basically.
And then another packet today, that's several of them.
Yeah, okay. Well, you probably didn't get the second one.
We got another packet.
We got another packet, and this, this one here is, is quite complicated. This is converting from, from our grandfathering clause on the hydropower and transmission. And what they're asking us to do is convert from the grandfather to the TCC tariff, which will, it's going to save us about a half a million dollars a year if we go for it, okay? And, and transmission and congestion charges. This is when we buy our incremental powers in the wintertime, and they're saying, we can't supply you, and they charge us like $9.75 an extra KW. We're going to get out of that, converting our tariffs. They won't be able to do that to us. The only, the only bad feature of it is, is the panicking charge, which, because we're over the allegation 12 months of the year, we shouldn't get involved in the panicking charges. But it could happen if we drop below our allegation, and it's almost double the money what you're paying now, okay?
There are chances.
There's chances, there's chances in it. Instead of paying, again, $11.88, we'll be down to $744. And then in another year and a half, we'll drop down to like $444, you know, because we're over the 12-month incremental power here. That is going down to Kurt. You know, we want to look over that one really, really close before we make a move on it. Just wait for Kurt to get back to me and say, he's going to check with a couple of the units that are going to be moving at the same time. They're not moving in the same tariff as we are, they're moving into a different tariff, but basically saving the same kind of money. It's not going to get any better with the ISOs out there, with that right now. As long as those guys are operating, we're going, they're going, they're going to charge us for every time they open their eyes. We have to be careful. And we spend about $5 million a year on lawyers in this New York Power Agency. We're there for a reason, to keep an eye on this stuff. Whatever.
So we just want to table that, at least, until we hear from?
Kurt, yeah, I have it, we got it until the end of November. Oh, we have to.
We can, we should have something by next meeting?
Yes.
You need, we don't need to watch the table that day?
No, just on the next agenda.
Does he still have the first motion? Are we still going, if we're still on the first motion?
Yeah.
Is this his? He wanted to do that.
Right. And that's all I have.
Thank you, Trustee Menard. Trustee Hockrow.
Just a couple of items, Doug, if you give us an update on any sewer projects.
What we've been working on, sewer plant, is Wyatt Bear's has their consultant at the sewer plant doing their own version of a capacity analysis as to what the sewer plant presence capability for handling sewer long-term is. And also, we're working on the interim draft permit for Wyatt Bear's, and we're working on the sewer code that will be bringing back to the future.
And you have, so you have a report made on the, look at the, any questions on that?
Thank you, Trustee Hockrow. Adam Park.
Yeah, we've been very busy getting ready for Christmas. Village historically has had their Christmas parade of toys the first Friday in December. And December comes in on Friday this year, so we will be preparing, decorations are going to start going up next week. And we'll look for all the newspapers, everybody to give us a lot of coverage so we can get all the children to come and see Santa Claus on December 3rd. And have the village completely lit up that night. So I think that's all I have.
Thank you. Arsham? Thank you, Bobby. Bobby? Doug?
One last thing. State Dock, we, we also used village equipment in the Dean's Arena barge to video State Dock. That video also is available, as is the water plant video through Gary Malinsky. And the video has been distributed to Paul Cruever and also to Northwoods Engineering in Serenac Lake for their review. Our input will be available this week, as to our opinion of the substructure foundation of State Dock.
Thank you, Doug. End of the meeting up to the public. Anybody want the public at this time to close the meeting? In recess, motion for recess. Motion made, seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carried. Five minutes. That's fine.